This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30. Who do we have on here for board members? Nancy? Do we have Jeremy and Steve? We don't have enough people?
Joe's here.
Okay, so, Joanne, do you have caller two and three recorded?
No, I don't. And Joe, are you one of those callers? Do you know how to put your name in when you log in?
Oh, I'm on the phone.
I see it now. It did come up. Caller number three is...
Oh, okay.
So, Star Carter is one of the callers, the 405-7720.
Okay, folks, we've called the meeting to order. And when you're not speaking, would you please turn off your mic? So it's much easier for them to transguide the minutes when they have to do those. So I see where Rapide Taylor has arrived on the phone. So Rapide, do you want to present your case, please?
Sure, Norma. Thank you. I represent, and I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with this issue. I know Mayor Zimmer's quite familiar with it. I represent Kathy Danielson at the Lyric Coffee House involving the placement of a utility pole directly in front of her building. So... She elected to participate in the underground project based on representations that all of the utility poles and lines... I'm sorry, somebody is having quite a bit of feedback. If you could mute your line, I appreciate that. Thanks. Sorry about that. So, when she elected to begin participating in 2017, she was provided with beautiful renderings of the street, maps, none of which showed a utility pole being placed directly in front of her business. Then, this past fall, end of October, National Grid, without any warning, came and placed a pole directly in front of her business. And I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the location, but it's right next to the River Rat Cheese Store. And there's a driveway in between where trucks make deliveries. And the pole is directly adjacent to the driveway, maybe a matter of inches off of the driveway. So Ms. Danielson's in the position now where she's being asked to pay a $9,000 bill to participate in the underground utility project. And now she's got a pole directly in front of her business when she had never previously had a pole in front of her business. I've met with Mayor Zimmer. I've met with National Grid. We met all together back in November. And Mayor Zimmer and I both told National Grid that that pole was not supposed to be there. Since met again with National Grid, and they've produced me maps indicating that the village knew that that pole was always supposed to be there. I've got maps from February 2016 showing the existence of that pole being there. So really, Ms. Danielson was kind of fed a line. And some misrepresentations were made to her about her participation in the underground project. We have asked National Grid to remove the pole and see if they could place it across the street. They said that they might be able to, but it would be very, very expensive. The design fee alone is a non-refundable $5,000. So I think that the village has a couple of options here. I think that the village can pay National Grid to remove the pole. I think it's going to be the most expensive option. But that pole really does create a hazardous condition. And there are delivery trucks that go in and out of that driveway. And that pole is directly on the border of that driveway. So all it takes is a child to pull out in front of a delivery truck or a truck to try to miss that pole and hit a family. And it's going to be a really expensive problem for the village. That's option number one. I think option number two is the village can pay for the Lyric's underground hookup. She elected to participate in the underground based on representations by the village that she would have no pole in front of her establishment and that she would have no wires in front of her establishment. And I think that it's incredibly unfair to require her to now pay $9,000 to have a pole when she never had one before. It's my understanding that most of the equipment has already been installed. So I think that the village should foot that bill. The final option would be that the village can pay for the Lyric to maintain its overhead connection to the electrical system. This is probably the least expensive option. However, you're then going to have wires where you weren't going to have wires overhead. So really, it's up to you guys to decide how you want to handle this. But my client should not and is not going to pay for that. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
As far as no pole in front of her place, that was never mentioned by me, that she never had one. I did go to that one meeting when she first got that pole. The drawings that the village had were all for the underground part, not for the overhead part that National Grid was responsible for. So our drawings did not show any poles, only the underground part and ours.
If I might, I've got the drawings. National Grid produced them to me on Friday. And they do show a pole, and they're dated. It's revision number three from February 22, 2016. And they show the entire system.
We were...
They made representations to me that this was public and that this was presented to the board and that the board accepted these drawings.
They were presented at a meeting, and we had several public meetings. And we had public meetings with the property owners downtown that were specifically involved with having to make this conversion. And we'd had several conversations with the Lyric and how they were going to pay for this. The actual fee is $8,084, not $9,000. And the work has already been done. So with the local law, she's going to be responsible. What we can do, she had opted to do payments on it through her taxes. And then she didn't make the first payment. So we can offer that option so she can have power come Thursday if she makes that first payment.
So it's your position that she should have to pay when she never had a pole in front of her facility? And she was told she would not have a pole?
I don't know who told her she was not going to have a pole there.
I'm looking at photographic renderings of the project, none of which show a pole in front of the Lyric. I've looked at the same maps that you've looked at, none of which showed a pole in front of the Lyric until National Grid just produced this map to me on Friday.
And they have a utility right-of-way there. And I can't stop them from putting the pole up there.
I don't, I'm not disputing that. I'm not saying that they can't put the pole up. I'm saying that my client shouldn't have to pay for an underground system to have a utility pole placed directly in front of her building.
Well, I can't ask the taxpayers to put the bill for the underground work that's already been done there.
Well, you're going to have to figure something out because it's incredibly unfair to have somebody have to pay $8,000 to have a pole placed in front of their building when they were told that they were going to be part of the underground system.
And they are part of the underground system. That pole has nothing to do with the village.
What benefit does she have?
I'm sorry?
Why would anybody agree to that? What benefit does she have? Nobody would ever agree to pay that amount of money to have a utility pole placed in front of their building when they previously did not have a utility pole placed in front of their building.
Okay. We'll take this. I don't know what her options are to... Then they're going to shut the power down on Thursday. We don't have a lot of time here. We're in the 11th hour to have this conversation.
Well, I've been having this conversation for three months now. And you know this because I've written you letters about it.
Well, I know that you've had conversations with, I believe you told Nocentry not to do the conversion last week when they came to make it, to energize it because everything has been in. And that was the part last week when they had an appointment. They came to do it, and they were told they couldn't. So they didn't energize it.
Right. Her options are she can hook back up to the overhead. The fee would be less than the $8,000. She can hook up to the underground. Or the pole can be moved. But she's not paying for any of these options. This is, this is a different problem. This is not a Lyric problem.
Okay. Would the board like to go into executive session after this? And then we'll reach back out to Rapide. The way it is right now, with the village position, we would have to move forward with the underground system so she could have power on Thursday. I don't know what arrangements she made with National Grid when they were up here.
She had no arrangements with National Grid yet. She was waiting for me to present this to the board today.
Right. So I don't know what her... The only option I have for her, for the village, is to pay the $2,021 and then move forward for the payments on her taxes.
So...
And that will provide her power for come Thursday. I don't know what her options are. Other option is with National Grid because they aren't going to even consider moving that pole for a decade. And it's, you know, that isn't going to happen. That pole's not going to go anyplace.
I understand that the battle to get National Grid to move that pole is an uphill battle. I do maintain that that pole is hazard where it's placed. I think that somebody runs the risk of getting very hurt when trucks are going in and out of that driveway trying to avoid that pole that's right basically in the driveway. But, you know, we'll talk about that when that lawsuit arises. As of right now, you know, I understand that National Grid is not going to pay at all to move that pole. And I understand that the village would be hesitant to pay to move that pole because of the cost associated with it. However, I think that the village made representations, my client, about her participation in the underground system that they did not live up to. And she was completely hoodwinked here and all of a sudden just had a pole placed in front of her establishment. You didn't know that it was going to be there even. I didn't know it was going to be there. She didn't know it was going to be there. So all of a sudden, it's the prize. Here's an $8,000 bill. You get a pole in front of your place. There's zero benefit to her.
Okay, board, do you want to... Thank you, Rapide. We will talk about this in executive session, see what our options are. But that's the only option that I have available to me right now so she can continue to have power as of Thursday. Because the system is scheduled to be going live on Thursday.
The 11th, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, Thursday.
This is Joe Christman. We should go into executive session because I have a bunch of questions on this.
Okay. Well, we'll do the rest of the meeting, and then we'll do that. And we can reach out to Rapide, okay?
Sounds good, folks. Thank you so much for your time.
Rapide, would you let me have your phone number?
Yeah. My office number is 315-686-3740.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Just a quick question from Alan Heberlin. If you're going into executive session now, how will the rest of us know when you go back into your regular meeting?
Well, we will probably be quite some time. And as soon as we get done with it. I would prefer to continue with the meeting as it is.
Yes.
Do the executive session and come back in. I can't tell you what time that'll be.
I would agree with you, Norma.
You don't want to do executive session at the end of our meeting?
At the end of the meeting, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what Alan was asking.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Does everybody have the police report and have any questions on that? If they're not, we'll move on to you, Terry Jones.
Hi, everybody. You all have a copy of my report. We had a busy weekend. A lot of snow this weekend. Boys put in a long weekend, did a great job keeping up with things, keeping the sidewalks open also. One thing I wanted to bring up to the board, and it's something that we used to do many years ago, was the guardrail at the end of Bain Street. We used to remove it. And that would allow the islanders to access that area when the bay was frozen where the Mary Street boat launch was. And because that's usually the last to freeze, and it's usually the first to open. And then that way, they could access the river with their boats at that launch. I just wanted to run this by the village board to see if they thought that it would be a good idea to remove it again. We'd remove the snowbank, obviously. That's there where we push the snow. And that would allow the islanders to access it until it freezes, of course. And then they would be able to access it again when the ice melts.
I don't have a problem with it. We've done it before, Terry. I don't know about the rest of the board.
I'm fine with that, Terry.
Okay.
If it's something that worked before, yeah, do it, Terry.
Okay. Yeah, it's something that, you know, we, I don't know, for whatever reason, we just haven't done it in quite a few years. Actually, we put a metal post in there, so that became quite the issue. But we can remove that post. And then in the spring, we'll put the guardrail back as it is now.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Terry? Well, I guess you're good to go, Terry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I have one thing. Terry and I were talking a little bit. And they're still having parking issues downtown where people park and so they can't plow. They're not supposed to be overnight parking. So my recommendation is to have a couple of signs put up, ones that you can put up and take down easy, so they're not permanent. And start holding people accountable for it. If they get like two tickets, adapt something into our village policy or whatever, just start having these people towed away. I mean, they're not even paying the tickets, so...
That is, that is correct. It's basically people that are living above the flower shop, I believe. It's the same three vehicles. And I spoke with Supervisor Peterson about it. He did make contact with them. I've ridden one vehicle. I know the license plate by heart. I've ridden it so many times. I've spoken with Jamie at the clerk's, the court clerk. She's only had one person pay any tickets this year. And I blame a lot of it on the reform that's going on. There's no accountability any longer. Even if they don't pay the tickets, the registration doesn't get suspended. So I don't know what the right answer is. And as Joe said, that maybe in the future, we need to come up with a policy. I know it becomes kind of a pain to tow the vehicles, and that becomes liability. But I know other communities do it. And I don't know what the right answer is. But I know Josh has written several tickets to the same vehicles as I have. So obviously, it's not working. He did make contact with them. They moved it the first night. There was no one there. And then the following night, the vehicle that I have memorized by heart was back. So it's hit and miss. And I typically, it's not a big deal when we don't plow. And I don't go out to write tickets, to write tickets. But when we're trying to remove snow, the last thing I want is us to have an incident and the wing inadvertently hits a vehicle that's parked down there. Now we've got upset residents because we, you know, hit their, we hit their vehicle. The only other recourse I've, we can do is if we get a substantial amount of snow and they want to continue to park down there. And I know it sounds like a dirty, rotten trick. But is to pile the snow around that vehicle and make them work to get out. And I don't want to come to that. But it's really becoming, it's almost like they're, you know, flipping us off every day that it snows. They don't care.
I think that's your only answer, Terry. You've tried to give them tickets and talk to them. Lance has talked to them. They're going to continue to do it until it's an inconvenience to them.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's why I recommend that we have something in the policy because of the no parking on the streets during the winter, that we have a towing attached to it. I mean, if they're not paying the tickets, they're sure going to pay attention when they pay that towing fee. So if you write two, maybe three tickets for the same offense, then it's not the village liability. That's the tow service liability. They have insurance for that.
Are we all set with Terry Jones so he can move on? We've got a couple people here from the wastewater treatment plant. Do you want to speak, Rob or Star?
I gave Star the option to speak, Norma, and she said I could do it. So in the last couple of weeks, there's been a couple of equipment failures. The boiler down at the Lola pump station, or the Lola, yeah, the pump house for the water, the boiler, research pump went bad on January 30. That's been replaced. And then on Sunday morning, Dustin was called in for a problem with East Union Street's pump. I came out that morning, did some troubleshooting with them. We determined, when I say we, Dustin, myself, and the authorities, electrical engineer, Dan Merrill, that it was a phase failure relay that went bad. That part's been ordered. I would assume that's going to be here in the next day or two, and then they'll replace it. I need to get in touch with Aqualogix. There's still been some communication failures. Other than that, we're plugging along. Oh, also, at the Lola pump house, the generator's starter went, and that's going to be replaced tomorrow morning. So outside of that, everything else seems to be working fine. Everybody's staying healthy, signing in when visitors come in.
Okay. Does anyone, thanks for the update, Rob. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Rob? Okay, I guess we're good there.
All right. Have a good night.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Star. Okay, on the consent agenda, items one, two, three, and four, are there any questions on that?
I have a question comment. So on the prepays for $73,000 and change, as I look at this, it says here Watertown Savings Bank, the Riverwalk, dead interest. Shouldn't that be under capital projects?
So what did you use for an account number?
Oh, I don't, oh, account number AA9710.
Can you help us out, Joanne? Is Joanne...
You know, maybe it doesn't really matter because we have to pay it anyways.
No, it is under AA. That is the code that Tina told me to use. It was a wire transfer. And it was after our, it was after our last meeting. So I put it on as a prepay to get it approved.
Okay. Just wondering. Okay. So that was my only question. So I would make a motion for the consent agenda items one through four.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Hey, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion's carried. All the capital projects, number five, are there any questions there? If not, can we have a motion to approve item five?
I'll make that motion to approve item number five.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Do that motion, Terry. Oh, we got the new rates from the town for zoning and planning. And I just saw them over the weekend. And I, we've normally kept the same rates that they had to keep the confusion down for people that are trying to get through the system. I don't have any problem with doing what they have given us. I don't know if anybody else is taking a better look at it. Does anyone have any questions on it? Or do you want to wait until the next meeting?
As I look through it, this is Nancy, as I look through it, the majority of the changes really affect the town. So that's what I noticed.
That's what you noticed. Okay. Did anyone else see anything?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. So then we can use that. And that was effective for the 1st of January, I believe, right, for the town?
Correct.
Yeah. If that's okay with everybody, we'll let them know that we are... At the board meeting, the annual meeting, we approved the rates that we had at that time. So we can just go ahead and approve these if that's okay with everybody. Make a motion right now to approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the new zoning rates for 2021.
And I'll second it.
Second? We got a second from Joe. Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? On this EFPR engagement letter, I sent a notice out to get a clarification. I think that it is for the single audit that we have to do for U S D A. But I'm not sure. So I'd like to wait until we get an answer on that because I don't know what other audit they'd be doing. If that's okay, can we postpone this and make it a discussion next week, next meeting?
It's fine with me, yes.
Yeah, okay. Joanne, my agenda doesn't show the December financials on it. We got those, and we sent them to the board. Did, we got those and we sent them to the board. Can we add that to the agenda that we have them and they're available and you'll put them online?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so we do have, they were a couple of weeks late, but we did get them Friday. Okay? Um, recently, and I would say maybe in the last couple of weeks, the auditor sent out a financial declaration that he needed to have signed and returned to him. So if you haven't done it, would you please, I expect a phone call from him someday this week and he might be asking where those are. And along with that, Alicia will be sending out the annual, um, financial disclosure to everybody. So when you see that email, it's not a duplication of the auditor, it's what we need to do as a board. So when she sends that email out the next week or so, please take a look at it and return it to her, okay? And now, moving along to, uh, National Grid, who's been a difficult, uh, field to say. Alicia, I sent you the update that we got from National Grid and to keep the project moving, they offered to put in solar lights. And if you've been downtown since they installed them, they are a dismal failure, they're worthless in my block. But that's, um, luck was involved in DOT because they're trying to get fired back up in March to keep the project ahead of schedules. They're looking to be out of here, luck is, early summer, which would be great for all of us. So, um, apparently National Grid dropped the ball as far as getting the watermelon lights ready to be put in and they aren't expected in before May, about the third of May. So, I guess we've got to deal with, uh, solar lights and just be careful down there. The police department's aware of it and Terry is aware of these. They look like a broomstick with a panel on the top of them, so they don't look very sturdy to me. But that was, um, I sent that, uh, letter to everybody on the boards. You've got the, uh, and I have not received a phone call from anyone that's been downtown the last couple of nights. And, uh, usually people stop in at Ryman's and complain about things and I checked with Mary and she hadn't heard anything either. They're keeping their lights on at the store longer now than they normally do. They have a lot of timers, so they extended that. So, well, I think local people are trying to make it as bright as they can down there, but, uh, it was disappointing on my part for National Grid to come up with that plan. Uh, there's a new Grand Alpha Bridge, New York, and we were red flagged last year, so I think that we might stand a better chance of getting it. I don't have any of the details on it, but, uh, that would be the Washington Island Bridge that, uh, we need to take another look at. We've got a fix on it, but, um, this was, um, good news to see that they have got another bridge, New York, out there. I'm not sure if everybody's aware of the phone number that Public Health has out there to try to get people to sign up for the JCC, um, vaccination. It's 211. Uh, I've tried it a couple of times and it's been, um, available, or they didn't have any slots, but now they're behind because they got to take the Saturday people because of the storm, move them up. So it's just worth a call. If you know of anybody that's struggling to get through the system, I went to, um, Potsdam last week and I've got my second shot scheduled for the 24th. It's a four-hour trip to do, but it does work and it works like a champ once you get up there. They've got it figured out how to make it move right along. But, uh, we got to help some of these people that don't have access to a computer or the patients to go through the system. So if you know of anybody that's struggling, uh, try and help them or we'll find somebody that can, okay?
Norma?
Yes.
What was that phone number again?
Uh, 211. It's all you got to dial, is 211, takes you right into Public Health.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, I went to my first chamber meeting and, uh, the Bass Tournament will be in September here, 250 anglers, and it is an open tournament. So local people will be able to participate if they want to, and we do have two or three people that like to do that. And the new, um, visitor guide is here, 72,000 of them. Actually, they're stored up at the village in the garage there. So, uh, they're looking to get the summer rolling. Hopefully it'll be, be able to do what they've got on the books. The budget, um, meeting has been set up for this Friday for department heads, so we're working on that. And the committee for the policy and the handbook, the meeting every Friday, and we've got the draft on that. And that's really coming together really well, so that'll be a big project to have put down and we're going to. Alicia, are we going to be able to do that this Friday with another meeting at 9:30?
Yeah, we have an hour, so it makes sense to still try to meet.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make clear that we had that going. Now, does anyone have any questions or anything they want to offer on the board?
This is Nancy. I have one question that came from the library. In the summertime, they do a reading program and they wanted to know if they could use the, the park, the wooden park or the, the wooden park to do their reading program. And I said, I didn't think that was an issue, but I would certainly check tonight, but I told them, no, you couldn't be there on Thursdays because of, uh, farmer's market.
Yeah.
But do they need any special or anything, uh, permission to use the park?
We never have had. I did make a note on, uh, when we were doing the update on the municipal building to see if we wanted to put anything in.
Yeah, I saw that, yes.
So I don't know if we do, but we never have. I mean, there's nothing up there that, you know, don't have to take care of themselves.
Right.
You know, I don't know what they were expecting.
No, they weren't expecting anything from the village. They just wanted to know, hey, do we need to get permission? And I said, I will check. So I will tell her they can go ahead and use it, just not on Thursdays.
Right, that's fine with me. What about the rest of the board?
Yeah, what's the rest say?
Nobody's got any issues with it. I think it would be a great idea. The only people that ever come as a group up here is the Lefargeville School. And that is their year-end outing for some grade over there, I don't know which one. And then you never know just when they're going to be there, but they've done it for long term. So any other questions? Comments?
Um, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Joe.
Um, well, we received an email from Christie Hunter. Did anybody read that?
Email from whom?
Christie Hunter. About the snowfall wrecking their fence.
I didn't see any email on it.
Uh, I got an email and I guess, um, a business next door over on Union has, uh, been falling off of their roof wrecking the fence and they know it's a long-going issue and everything else. And I was just wondering if, uh, the village was aware of it and what our steps or processes are, uh, that we have to, or what we need to do to get involved to get the, the things fixed.
Well, I'm not sure where the fence is you're talking about.
Well, Christie Hunter's fence, uh, Jake next door has, uh, the roof the snow is coming off of, and I guess they got with the planning board and, uh, they had an agreement with the planning board that they would fix it from destroying the fence. Well, it's still destroying the fence. And this was back in 2016, 2017, 2018. And I guess, uh, you know, Jake knows it's, uh, an ongoing issue.
Who is Jake?
Uh, Nancy, you know his last name.
Van Renan.
Yeah.
Norma, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, I was just checking here and you were not on the email chain, so I'm forwarding that email to you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, no, she wasn't there.
I didn't look, Norma.
Yeah, no, I didn't either. So anyway, it has been forwarded to you, Norma, for you to read. And I think it's good, um, and I'm sorry, Joe, for interrupting, that.
No, you're right.
You read that and, um, and then I, I think that maybe at the next meeting, we need to have a, you know, some discussion over, over this as to what's really going to transpire. Um, she's not asking for us to fix her fence, that's not it. But this continues to happen and it doesn't get taken care, care of properly. So you'll see the email.
Okay.
And then go from there. How's that?
Sounds like a plan.
All right, thank you.
Any of the other board members that need, uh, the email, get with me after the meeting and I'll forward it to you.
No, I'm doing, Joe. Sorry, Joe, to interrupt again. I'm doing it right now.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, Nancy.
Yes, yes, I'll do that right now, because I see two other board members were, um, left off, so.
Oh, gotcha. So, yeah, this is just one of those long-going issues that we need to get resolved.
Okay. Sure, we'll take a look at it and talk about it at our next meeting, okay? Anything else? Uh, anyone that's on the phone, do they have any questions for us or something we can If not, I would move that we go into executive session.
I second that.
Okay, thank you.